All right, Ms. Gresham, let's proceed.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is public hearing number two to receive comments on setting the 2024 millage rate for the assessment of property taxes in the city of Granville, and to receive comment on adoption of the city of Granville fiscal year 2025 budget. We will open the public hearing at 6:30. Anybody who would like to speak against or not in favor of the 2024 millage rate, which is 5.228, and the budget which is set on that millage rate, come forward to the podium and give your name and address, please. Seeing no one, anyone in favor of the 2024 millage rate of 5.288 for the setting of property taxes, or any comments on the adoption of the city of Granville fiscal year 2025 budget, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor and council members, we'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing at 6:31.
Well, we actually can't vote, so I believe the public hearing is closed on your notice.
Okay.
All right. All right. So, Monday, August 12th, roughly 6:33 PM, let the Granville City Council work session come to order. Mr. Gresham.
The first item, Mr. Mayor and council members, is a public hearing which will be held on August the 26th, 2024, which is in two weeks. We will have a public hearing to hear public comment on the adoption of an ordinance to make the following text amendment to the city of Granville zoning ordinance, amending section 5.2 appearance standards. A copy of the proposed ordinance is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk during regular business hours, Monday through Thursday. And as I said, the public hearing will be held on Monday evening, August the 26th, 2024, which is in two weeks. We will also have a public hearing the same day, at the same meeting, on Monday, August the 26th. We will have a public hearing to hear public comment on the special use application by property owner Azelia Zico and business owner Russell Knight to operate a tattoo parlor at One Main Street, Granville, Georgia, which is parcel identification number G040018007. And as I said, that public hearing will be held on Monday, August the 26th, 2024, at 6:30 or soon thereafter as possible. The next item for the mayor and council members is any discussion on the second reading of ordinance number 202407 to amend the zoning ordinance, section 5.2 appearance standards. Now, that came before the planning commission and received unanimous approval.
Do we have any discussion on the appearance standards?
Let me just make mention that actually what we're amending here after looked at this closer and was preparing the ordinance, we're making this amendment to the subdivision regulations rather than section 5.2 of the zoning ordinance. It seems a better place for this to fit. These standards apply as it relates to subdivisions, and so that's where the amended information will go, is in the city's subdivision regulations.
And just to repeat, what these standards, do they create standards for builders, developers, to try to make sure we get quality building in the city of Granville? Any questions? Okay.
The next item you have, ladies and gentlemen, is discussion on a special use permit by the property owner and business owner, Russell Knight, to operate a tattoo parlor at One Main Street, Granville, Georgia, partial identification number G040018007. As you know, Mr. Knight is one of our business owners. He operates a tattoo parlor presently in Granville. However, he'd like to move across the street to operate his tattoo parlor, and because of the change of location, he has to have another special use application, and both he and the property owner are in sync with seeking approval, and the planning commission gave unanimous approval.
However...
So, I'll take care of this one. Let's take this one and the next one. Two and a half years ago, whatever, when Russell came and got approval for the tattoo shop, then, commercial residential is what the zoning is for the downtown buildings, and that's because commercials in the bottom and they have apartments in the top. Currently, tattoo parlors, tattoo shops, are not conditionally approved for that zoning. While it was done back in 2022, whether it was oversight or whatever, the actual zoning was not changed to allow conditional approval. So, what we're doing here is, is we're going to work toward approving him to make the conditional, but at the same time, we've actually got to change the zoning to allow for even the conditional to go in. So, it's, we'll approve the zoning for the conditional to go in, then we approve Mr. Knight to get his zoning approval. Oversight what, we don't know, but it's simply allowing that, and again, another point, too, we want a conditional instead of just allowing tattoo shops. That's one kind of profession, we want to make sure we don't become Tattoo Central, Georgia. That's all. Not the wrong business, but, okay, any discussion? We'll just not vote those out, Ms. Gresham. Any discussion? Okay. So, we took two of those out. Okay.
Okay, the next item for your consideration is discussion on resolution number 2024-10, setting the annual millage rate for the assessment of property taxes. And as I said, we are not raising the millage rate, we're keeping it the same as the 2024, pardon me, the 2023 millage rate, and that is 5.228. That's what our budget is based on. And the next resolution is resolution number 202411 to adopt the city of Granville fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, set at 5.28 mills.
So, I want to address both of these, as I've had some citizen questions about them. I'll start with the budget itself. This is for the general expenditures. This is not capital expenditures, this is not utility capital expenditures, this is paying for the police, paying for the senior center, paying for parks and recreation, not equipment, but the maintenance of these and various other things. We are only going up 6% on the budget, and in the face of 8% to 9% inflation plus massive insurance increases, I, like I said, this process starts around February of every year when Mr. Millsen handles our budget, sits down with the chief, with the other department heads, and takes a look at expenditures coming up. They've done a darn good job of controlling those expenditures. Then, around the end of May, Ms. Gresham, Ms. Rooks, I'm blanking out myself, and of course, our city clerk, we sit down at a table and we go through this extremely, line by line by line by line, questioning each item. Some items we lowered, some items we raised a little bit, understanding what was coming before us. So, as far as the expenditures, 6%, and again, folks, as I, as I said, I come out of corporate private sector, looking in the public sector, I'm just telling you right now, you can say, well, cut the budget. Well, what services do you not want? The police is our biggest expenditure, and our police force is one of the best in the state of Georgia, and they know what they need to spend on. And yes, it does include pay raises. We're facing the same problems that are surrounding Cowie and everybody else's, maintaining officers. We lost another one due to money, and it's a difficult thing, but we, we have to pay these people, they work hard, and, 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 I'm not even going to touch that subject anymore. Now, let's talk about the taxes a minute. The taxpayer bill rights, which I know intimately, because it was my brother that was heavily involved in creating the taxpayer bill rights. If we were to collect one more tax dollar than we did last year, we have to say we're increasing taxes. That's correct. I believe it's the rate of tax that matters. We are not increasing the rate of tax, we're keeping the historical millage rate. Do some people have to pay more taxes because their property value went up? Yes. Mine went up 17% this year, okay? So, I'm facing this issue as well. And I kind of got late and didn't file the homeowner's extension on time, so anybody watching this, please make sure you did your homeowner's item on that. The other item that's causing us to, to collect more taxes this year is another line item which we haven't had. We have $1.3 million in new construction, that is factoring in as well. That's good. Next year is probably going to be around 25 million, and if we can attract commercial businesses, which we need, you know, I keep coming back to it, when you don't grow for 20 years, when you don't grow, and you have people who don't want it to grow, you run into the case of having to increase because costs increase. Now, we are starting to see the effects of growth in Granville, and one day, when the tax numbers get right and we keep it smart and the services don't have to go up a lot, we'll be able to cut those millage rates, and I promise you, we will be able to do that one day. So, technically, in my book, we're not raising taxes, although we have to say that because we're going to collect some more tax dollars. And one last piece about the property taxes, out of that 4.3 million, your property taxes only cover 18% of that budget. The rest is local option sales tax, money's being brought in over from the utilities, and other fees and such that we collect. All right, discussion.
Can we talk?
Discussion.
Okay. I just want to speak for the record that I'm opposed to the millage rate increase.
Well, to clarify, there is no millage rate increase.
The process that was used to increase the millage rate last year, the process, the public hearing, when I was told to send in the audience, I just wanted to bring that up again, because that was totally out of order. I'm opposed to the processes being used for this budget. Now, you mentioned you sat down with staff and you went over the budget, line item by line item. Well, we're the city council, we approve it, we should have that same kind of opportunity to ask questions about the budget. It should be up on that screen there for the audience to see it, where you go through it, department by department, so they can see what's going on, so the department heads can explain what's going on in their departments. That's the proper way to handle a budget, not to... I saw a bound copy of the budget. Why is the budget bound? Has the budget been bound? I mean, like, it's a done deal, it's a rubber stamp.
Bound, yes, so that you can have it to be able to properly read.
Okay, well, I didn't even have a copy in my packet.
Well, we don't, I told you from day one that you're not going to get another copy. We gave you the rights.
Well, I need a copy for each meeting where we're going to discuss.
So, you're asking us to spin more, kill more trees when you just read the budget?
That is the way that we normally have a budget.
Well, we're changing the rules.
Mr. Mayor, can I please talk?
Ms. Mayor.
There, copies, right front of you.
This is a bound copy.
Yes, ma'am.
I found it, just because it's easier for me to play. It doesn't mean you're... So, it doesn't mean that this is the final and that we don't, we don't have a chance to make any, any changes. This looks to me like it is ready to be distributed as our budget, and we haven't even had, council members have not...
It says draft.
You all have had this budget since the beginning of July.
I was not finished talking.
The process does not say that we go over it line by line in the council meeting.
I was not finished talking, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, please finish.
To me, this looks like a bound copy, spirally bound copy. So, how can you take a draft budget and bind it, and to appear like this is going to be the budget? We haven't even talked about it. Each of us have a department, no one has been giving me any information about what's going on in the police department. That is my, that is my assignment this year. Mr. Clark, he's utility.
Which does not affect the general budget.
Ms. Evans, this administration, and Mr. Brain, your streets and public works, has anybody sat down with you from that department to let you know, you know, how it's going, you know, what are we going to need next year? Were we able to cut anything? Are we going to hire any new employees? Has anybody, have any of the council members had that kind of information? None of us, and we don't have the budget up on the screen for the audience, the, the audience to view. There's no copy of the budget down there for them to look at. So, this whole process of the budget, I just want to say that I'm opposed to it. I would like to know if it includes increases in employees? Are we getting new employees?
No.
Are we getting the pay raise, any, any pay raises? What's in this budget?
Yes.
See what I'm saying?
Okay, so let me clarify. Per our charter, it is the responsibility of the mayor, the mayor, to work with the city manager, to present the budget to the city council, that is in our charter. It is my job to present it to you all, where then you can ask questions of the mayor and the city manager, line by line. You all have now had this budget for over 45 days, and it is online, online, to be reviewed by any of the citizens who want to take a look, and I have offered on countless times on Facebook, on my live Q and A, if you'd like to come down to City Hall and meet with me, and I'll go through the budget line by line with any citizen, or any council person, or anybody who'd want to. It is my responsibility to present this budget, is that not correct, Mr. Mitchell?
That is correct.
Okay? So, this isn't an open forum where we're going to go line by line. You certainly can ask questions line by line, and the reason we bound it is it kind of looks professional like this. So, that's even beyond the point. So, now I want to turn to, does the council have any questions about particular items in the budget that we need to address? I, I will freely tell you, once again, the police are the largest expenditure of our budget, and from a standpoint of increased costs, they are a fair amount of that increased cost, because, number one, we have to replace patrol cars every now and then. Number two, they are getting a raise. Number three, the insurance to cover the things they need has gone up. Number four, there's technology involved in their job these days, because keep in mind, they're also deputized into Cowie County. The rest of the items, I've gone through, the senior center, the cost of food is going up some, but that's, we provide great things to the seniors, to include meals on wheels, okay? Everything else I've gone through, there's really nothing tremendously going up, it's just incremental cost, thanks to the fact things cost more. Now, council, do you have any questions on anything in the budget we're going to talk about tonight? We have one more meeting for the budget before we go. Okay?
I have another question, Ms. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible to get an organizational chart?
You have one.
For the city?
I've given you one three times.
Is it possible to get an organizational chart for this, as an attachment to this budget that we're reviewing, to show that what we're approving, departments, number of employees for those departments, and their capacity? And I would really like to know, you're going to increase the budget 6%? What is, you said it's for like insurance and that, so what, why is it necessary to increase 6%?
Insurance went up 37%, we have to pay the insurance bill. We managed to hold the line on other items and cut some, but our insurance went up 37%. And I think everybody out there's, insurance went up this year, didn't it? Yeah. So, we're suffering the same things everybody else does. Gasoline prices, food prices, prices of pipe, prices of, of everything. Again, I commend, 6% and with what we're facing, that's a damn good job. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Under city council printing and binding, this $5,000, is that money?
You got it, you're holding it in your hands.
Yeah, can we upgrade that? $5,000?
I had network wires run to all of your places, I would love nothing better than for you to have tablets instead of paper. You can read all this online before you come in here. These are, or, these, yes, these are the little things that add up.
You see that already?
Yeah.
Yes.
We could pay for that this year then.
Absolutely, I, I'd like to move to better technology.
Completely eliminate this, yeah.
And just on a side note, do you know the one department that actually cut their budget by like 10% this year from last year?
City council.
Who was it? No, you are over budget. Betty, who was it?
It was us.
No, wasn't you? Come on.
I'm there.
The mayor. I'm, right now, I'm at 20% of yearly budget expenditure. Why? Because I don't take vacations on the city like my predecessor did, okay? All right, anything else?
Did we get any additional money for education and training for council members?
It is in the budget, yes.
We did?
It's in the budget, yes. Line item on page four, or, page four. Education and training on page five, third line item down, $4,500. And there's $5,000 in travel. Okay? All right, anything else? All right, Ms. Gresham.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members, the next item is discussion on resolution number 2024-12 to accept a Jifa loan in the amount not to exceed $125,000 to perform a lead service line inventory project. Let me explain.
Ms. Gresham, can you pull your mic in for me?
Sure. Let me explain. The Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which is administered by Jifa, Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, wants us to conduct, and we are required to conduct, a lead pipe service line inventory. So, they're requiring it, but contrary to most governments, this is not an unfunded mandate. They are giving us, literally giving us, $125,000 to do that. It is a forgivable loan in the amount of $125,000. So, we can spend up to $125,000 to acquire, construct, and install the environmental facilities described in Exhibit A of the loan documents to conduct a lead pipe service line inventory. Now, we have done most of this because when we changed out our water meters, we made notes what service lines had lead pipes in them, and fortunately, not too many of our service lines are in that area. So, we're in good shape, I don't anticipate spending half, more than half, of the $125,000. But like I say, we have to fill out the paperwork, we have to pass a resolution to accept the money, the city attorney will have, have to give an opinion, and as I say, the promissory note has to be signed, and there's some paperwork requirement, but in the long run, we are not spending any of our general fund money to conduct the lead pipe service line inventory. to conduct the lead pipe service line inventory.
And let me clarify so that it's very to the point. The lead pipe service pipe is the pipe from our meter into the house. It is not in our network. It's from our meter to the residence. It's technically the resident owns. And our only concern has been, obviously, the mill village, some of the older houses. Turns out the subdivisions that were all built have no issues. So just to make it very clear, that's, that's what is being mandated. And this is a state mandate now from the state environmental protection. Questions? Okay, Mr. Chair.
And the next item we have for your consideration, Mr. Mayor and council members, is discussion on the audit engagement letter by Gerald Pentecost, who is a CPA, to conduct the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four year-end audit at a cost of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, which he has not raised since we initially engaged him five years ago. So we recommend approval. He does a good job. He has a good relationship with our staff. He gets the job done. He coordinates with our accountant, James Edgar. They're both been on the same page. We have not had a late audit. So we recommend engaging his services again this year.
Okay. Discussion.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'm opposed to using this auditor this year, this auditor this year.
Okay.
I think we need to do an RFP.
And what is your reasoning for not using Mr. Pentecost, who's been very excellent? Provides proper documents. The state approves it. And of course, we are not spending a great deal of money. And of course, if we get someone new, we have to train them on how to work with the city. So what is your concern?
My concern is that last year, I expected him to be at the meeting to answer questions about the audit. And he, I had the understanding that he would be here. He didn't show up. He wasn't on the phone. So they didn't, they went unanswered. So I'm saying that if he, if we're going to use an auditor, we need to have an auditor that's going to come and address the city council and, and answer the questions that we have about the audit. And not be given answers from the staff as if the staff did the audit. We need the auditor present. Is that why he's so cheap? Is because he doesn't show up, doesn't have to show up?
Well, I wouldn't use that word cheap. He is not cheap. He is less expensive than other auditors. But that's a bad word to use for someone who is a CPA. He does an excellent job. The fact that we don't have to pay him travel expenses and pay his hourly rate to show up means he is less expensive.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh huh.
I was, I would just make a recommendation that we try to find someone that's local, that doesn't have to travel. Of course, he come from Alabama or somewhere. If we asked about if he was local, then we wouldn't have, it wouldn't be the issue of having to travel.
So how many CPAs we have in Granville? They're practicing and have an office?
In Granville?
Ms. Berry, when we first engaged Gerald Pentecost, we put out an RFP and no one, no one responded.
How many years ago was that?
As I remember, it was in twenty-seventeen. Fiscal year twenty-seventeen. As I said, five years ago. That's about right.
And if you had any questions for him, he would have gladly been on the phone. We had a work session. There were no questions. I told him for the next meeting, Gerald, we don't need you.
Okay, now I understand, Mr. Mayor. Because when I talked to the office, they said that, that they, someone would be here. But then you told them that he didn't need to be here. Okay, that explains it.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay.
The next item we have is discussion on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five contract for services with Three Rivers Area Aging Agency on Aging. This is the umbrella organization for the senior center. Every year, we get a contract with Three Rivers Area Agency on Aging. They serve multiple counties, and we're a subcontractor. They provide certain fees for us, basically in the meals for our senior, seniors who attend and for our home delivery, quote, "meals on wheels." This is a standard contract. The city attorney has seen it for many years. And every year, we get it. And every year, we execute it. And every year, we get money from Three Rivers for our senior center.
Questions? Okay.
Now, the next item we have, it's in your packet. It's discussion on a proposal from the Granville Beautification Board to install a new Welcome to Granville sign with lighting and landscaping at the corner of Highway twenty-nine and Griffin Street. You will know, this is coming up toward the BP station on that side of Highway twenty-nine, State Route fourteen. You will see a little black and white sign that says, Welcome to Granville. Tells you it's directional. This proposal is a good-looking welcome sign for the city of Granville. The little sign with the directional arrows will be moved to, well, it'll be moved probably to the side of this proposed sign. So it'll still be visible, but this welcome sign as proposed by the beautification board will take the main focus. It'll, your eyes will focus on that. And it'll cost approximately nine, or eighty-five hundred dollars. Eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
And let, let me add to that. This is being paid for, the bulk of it being paid for, from the monies we collected from Marvel for their movie. The rest, we still have some leftover money from the Bondsman. And then a few hundred dollars, we will actually cover for the Parks and Rec fund. So the movie money is going to, into a sign, which I think will be great. These are the little things, I think, that make Granville start really looking like a nice city, all the way down to the flagpoles that we put in. They look wonderful. So this is just something the beautification board has been working on. Thank the beautification board. And with that, discussion.
Is there anybody here tonight from beautification committee?
I don't believe so, no.
Who's the chair that came in?
Brenda Raptis.
Brenda Raptis?
Uh huh. So I'm going to have this up if we approve it. Yes, I, I'm going to guess, I mean, I haven't talked to the people installing it, but as when it's approved, it goes forward. I mean, we, we've got the money. I told them, let's get going. So I would, I guess maybe a ten, fourteen days. All right. Even then. I don't know what they might have to order to do it, but, you know, immediately.
So we don't have to approve this expenditure?
Yes.
Well, hold on, I'll explain something. No, technically, you don't. It's below twenty-five thousand dollars. We could have done this without your approval. But I wanted to bring it forward, council, so you all could see the design. You could see the work that went into it, explain that it's paid for by the movie money. But no, technically, we could have done this without the council. But this is one of the things I think the council needs to know on. So that we're all agreeing that this is wonderful.
I see we have a copy of their agenda. They had a meeting today?
Yes.
Yeah. Are we going to get a copy of their minutes from their meeting?
I don't know if they take minutes or not, but if so, I, we can request from Brenda.
Yes, we do.
Okay. I don't know. I don't look at those minutes.
Yeah, I think it would be, I would like to get copies of all the minutes of the boards when they have them. And if they send them to the city clerk, I'd like to get a copy.
Okay.
They're advisory board to us, so we need to know what they're doing and what they, you know, what they're proving and.
Okay. Well, right now, this is the item in front of the council. Any questions?
No questions on the website.
Right. Any questions?
I would like to receive a copy of the minutes.
Okay. Do we have anything on this project, please?
Nope.
Ready to get down. Okay. Mr. Chair.
The next item is discussion on a proposal to resurface and restore the basketball court located at ninety-two Post Street Park. This item has a initial cost of four thousand dollars. And I, I suspect we will have to bid this item out if it's approved. So I don't know what the cost will be. But to resurface and restore the basketball court to usable and maintainable condition will be in the bid package.
Okay. And Mr. Clark had presented this forward.
He has.
So are we paying for it?
Yes.
Okay.
In the eighties, it was loaded.
Okay.
And it was blue and white. So was the tennis court. I think it would look good if the basketball court went back to the original.
Then you get the Pickleball Court, so it would be one.
Yeah. And then also, the city of Granville, you know, logo will be in the center court. And it will be a reusable stencil.
We're going to give it boys?
The stencil that is making this logo would be like reusable. So we can reuse it constantly over and over again on any property that we want to put it on from now on out. And it was, you know, designed by Scott Palmer.
Was that included in your?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I think that it would be a good idea if we, if staff starts using the O'Hare projector to put things up on the screen so that the audience can see, we've got these things up here looking at it. The audience, they don't have anything. If it was up on the projector, they would be able to see things that, that we're talking about. Especially when we have graphs or pictures or images. And that's just a suggestion.
Okay.
And, and the other thing I wanted to mention, this, this project is, I see it's being presented by Mr. Clark. And he's the chairperson of the utility committee.
So?
This is a project for Parks and Recreation.
Any one of you that come up with something viable, whether you belong to that committee or not, can do so.
Well, how does that make someone feel if that's their assignment and somebody else takes it and runs with it? We were each given an assignment, and that's all one sentence, Mayor.
I don't get offended by it.
I come up with stuff all the time, and I don't belong to any committees.
Yeah. I mean, you do your homework, bring it to the council meeting, put it on the agenda, and we'll vote on it.
Absolutely. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Next item.
The next item is discussion on resolution number twenty-four dash thirteen honoring police officer Corporal Kevin J. Infam. This resolution was prepared by Councilmember Dee Berry.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. The council police committee is the, is my assignment this year. And I presented this resolution to, to honor Corporal Infam. And as most of you know, he unexpectedly passed away on Sunday, July twenty-eighth. And I spoke with Police Chief Whitlock and got a little bit of information about him and the laws that they are dealing with. Corporal Infam was a hard worker, an active member of the Granville Police Department for approximately four years. He was a field training officer for the department as well as serving, handling the department vehicles. And as most of you probably saw, his car parked out on the lawn, which was a great gesture, decorated with flowers and other objects. So this resolution is presented for approval to honor him, to have a picture of him at City Hall during the month of August in an area where when people come in to transact business, they can see his picture. So I know that you don't want to approve any resolutions at this work session. So hopefully, we can unanimously approve it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on that? Okay, Mr. Chair.
The last item on your agenda before announcements, Mr. Mayor and council members, is discussion on a special event permanent application to clean up city parks on National Cleanup Day to take place on September the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, from nine AM to twelve PM at ninety-two Post Street Park and the park complex at Griffin Street, three twenty-nine. Now, the city will fund lunch for the volunteers for this. And this special event application is presented by our supervisors, Supervisor of Parks Recreation and Special Events, Shelley Smith. She is coordinating this with the beautification board. So it's sort of a joint effort.
And for the citizens of Granville who watch this, please come out. We've done park cleanups and not well attended. So come on out and let's clean up our parks. So any questions?
It would be like to be like an annual event from now on out, an actual cleanup day.
Well, actually, I'd like to, might do it twice a year.
You know, they actually have a beautification day and an actual cleanup day on the holidays. So, you know, we could do both.
Maybe we do one in September, one in April. Okay. Any other questions?
Did we actually need an application for this?
Yes.
Application for a special event that we are having?
Yes. Two reasons. Number one, it is a city-sponsored event. Number two, we're paying for food. So you actually have to approve that. Not that it's budget-wise, but... Not that it's budget-wise, but it's part of the event. We approve.
Do you know which is a fiscal impact? Usually, these items, we know what the fiscal impact, if there's any. Do you know?
Less than five thousand dollars.
Less than?
Less than.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions?
Uh, one more, Mr. Mayor. You, you say it's a cleanup day, so what's the anticipation of what, when the people show up, what are they gonna be doing?
Picking up garbage, picking up glass.
Limbs.
Limbs, which are all the time in the parks. I was there Saturday, in fact, picked up some glass, and I'm not gonna say what else was in the park, but I cleaned it up.
Hell, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the containers, they don't have to bring anything, they just show up, they don't, bags and everything?
Bring a pair of wood, pair of wood glows.
Whether it be gloves, you know?
And you might wanna bring a shovel or a rake.
Gloves, face mask, whatever they need will be provided.
Nope. Bring your gloves, your own face mask.
Yeah, trash bag will be provided.
Trash bag?
Yeah.
Okay, will there be T-shirts?
No.
No T-shirts?
No.
No, no, no souvenirs?
They get lunch.
They get lunch?
It'll be a Chick-fil-A lunch.
Okay, lunch.
And they'll call that, they'd cost nine dollars and fifty cents each.
All right.
It'd be nice if they had a little sticker or something to say, "I volunteered," or something, like a little souvenir to show, they showed up, they volunteered, that's just a suggestion, a little sticker to give them.
All right. Mr. Grisham.
Okay, for announcements, the Comcast changes to the Infinity TV program advisory is on our website. Basically, they, they send this, and they tell us about what channels they're changing. We put it on our website so everybody could see it. Second item, and most important, is that there will be a special call meeting on Mondays, August the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at six-thirty PM for the city council to set the millage rate for property taxes. We have to have that done so it can go to the tax commissioner to be put on the tax bill. So, everyone is advised that there will be a special call meeting on Monday, August the nineteenth, which is next Monday, at six-thirty PM or soon thereafter for the city council to set the millage rate for property taxes. And after adjournment, on your way out, the city clerk will hand you a packet of material for the special call meeting. Please do not leave without the packet of material in your hand. That is all you're going to get. It will not be on email.
Okay. And with that, city business is done for the evening. Your adjournment.